Wednesday, June 29th, 2022, meeting of the Norfolk County Board of Commissioners to order. I'm going to read the roll. Commissioner Stady.
I'm present.
Permission to Collins.
Present.
Chairman Shay is present. We have a quorum. On Thursday, March 12th, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That auto was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. On February 12th, 2022, by the action of the legislator, that auto was extended until July 15th, 2022. Fast approaching. So we are live and on Zoom today. I'm going to ask everyone to stand and join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business on our weekly agenda is number three, minutes of the open session meeting of June 22nd, 2022 for approval.
Do a roll call as well.
I did the roll call.
Did you?
We did present, yeah.
Oh, we did, okay.
Do you want, you know, Joe, do you want to jump right to Canton? Because Canton's here and they're waiting. You want to do that?
This would be.
And they're clapping because they want to go. How about we jump to the opera award? Would that be okay?
Certainly.
All right. Number nine.
Number nine.
Warrant for approval.
Opera warrant for approval. I'm going to have Commissioner, I'll have Director Cronin explain this, and then we'll go right to it.
You sure?
Sure, come on up here, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, you have three grant approvals for the American Rescue Plan Act for you, including the town of Canton. This is their first grant award. It totals $350,000. The grant has come in under the category of infrastructure, water sewer. This is for the sewer pump station remote monitoring equipment. I believe it's part of a long-term project that Canton has been working with. Earlier today, selectman John Conley has come in to recognize the receipt of the award. He asked for the award in cash, which we agreed to do.
I'm going to Vegas, so I'll be in Vegas.
So I'm black, John. Well, I'm black.
However, notwithstanding the direct deposit, which of course will follow, I turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman, and the town of Canton. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Stady, any comments?
Yeah, my, it's my pleasure, obviously, as coming from Canton, has a special meeting today to present the first of many, hopefully, opera awards to our town. On behalf of the county commissioners, I know everybody put a lot of work into it. I'm sure Chairman Conley will recognize them. I don't want to steal your thunder, but it certainly is great to give you some funds that are needed, and we've been doing this other towns, as you know. I think our total now is up to about 20 million, Mr. Chairman, so we have been far exceeding in terms of the other counties. If there's any kind of a race, we're ahead of the other counties. So I say that with pride on behalf of all of us. It's a great team doing it. So with that, unless Peter wants to make any comments?
We just thrilled to work with Canton.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's just been fantastic. On behalf of Randy Scollins, our finance director, Louis Jutres, who is the IT guru, and also Charlie Asmose, the town administrator, those are the three that have done all the work. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of Mr. Cronin and Billy Buckley, and also, of course, the commissioners, Commissioner Jay Collins, and of course, our own Commissioner Stady. Thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for all your hard work. And I know it wasn't easy at times there. There was shots coming left and right. So, but thank you. I'm very honored to be here and very thankful. I mean that with all sincerity. And thank you on behalf of, and of Charlie, Randy, or Louis, like to say something if that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Anyhow. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to recognize, John, and most importantly, the board of selection, who worked on this, organizing this and approving it and getting it done expeditiously. But Randy and Louis have done a bang-up job getting this ready, brings on five more pump stations into our SCADA system. And I turn to them to offer any comments, but again, thank you to the county commissioners.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great.
You're welcome. We can have some more.
Yeah, more to come. Bottom is number one. I just want.
Yeah, we've got, you've got 11 more projects becoming your way that the select board invited to send to Norfolk County. So expect to see those in the next, next couple of weeks. And very grateful and thankful for the consideration for this particular project and, and the award here today. So thank you very much.
Welcome. Yeah, that's great. That's great.
Okay, any other comments on this federal opera ward to the town of Canton? Commissioner Stady.
Black.
Yeah, okay.
All in.
Yeah, black. Is it black? Or was it blonde? Say it with red.
No, we don't write red. We go with the black.
Well, I won't agree.
I'll see you guys Tuesday.
All right, Mr. Chairman, it's with pleasure that I will move the approval of the opera award on behalf of Norfolk County to the town of Canton in the category of water sewer infrastructure for the details submitted in our application approved by our committee in a total amount of $350,000. That is so moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Again, congratulations. This is the first of many, we hope, and I think the first is the most difficult. We're going through the paperwork, but now you understand how we're doing it, and we're very, very happy with the progress this has made. So congratulations.
Very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Charlie, take care. See you soon. Thank you.
See you. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Randy. See you, Charlie. See you, Louis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Do you want to do the second award, or we're at opera, or go back?
No.
Let's go back.
Let's go back. Okay.
Let's go back to number three, then we'll go right to public comment. Number three, minutes of the open session meeting of the June 22nd, 2022 meeting for approval.
I'd move approval of the minutes?
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number four, public comment. Every week we have a session here for public comment. I believe we have a gentleman here who has some public comment.
I am here also, but you're welcome to go ahead.
Matt, second. He's been here before, so we'll go to the newbie. Come right up here, sir, and sit with us. All we need is your name and address.
Yeah, your name.
If you make any comment you want.
Thank you.
Joe Burke from Randolph. I live 54 Hill Street. You people, you know, you do the spraying for the mosquitoes and everything else.
Actually, we don't do that.
That isn't us.
It's part of Norfolk County.
County, but it's not part of Norfolk County government.
Yeah, I believe it.
Board held said that, but we just wondered.
Everybody thinks that it is.
Yeah, everyone thinks it is. It, yeah, it sounds like it is, but it's actually the state.
The rule of thumb, if there's any money out there for like rodents and ticks, because in Randolph, we had quite a bit going on.
So do you have a contact information that can reach you or to be helpful to?
I take your counsel from what health court, I told the board how to scan it.
Sure. I'll, let me get my card. We'll help him find where he used to go.
And the, okay, then we'll wait for the other path on 12th and 13th Street or something.
Joe, we have a longstanding item on the town of Randolph on our agenda today. It's only an occurred cut.
Yeah, we're trying to find, we're trying to find where it starts and where, those are from Scanlon Drive up. Is that the way you're going? I don't know.
That's the, there's the plan right in front of you. I mean, I can put you in touch with our county surveyor, but I thought that's the reason you were here.
Yeah.
I'm here for both.
Oh, okay.
So that's the comment I talked, the board held asked that question because we did have some money for the rodents, so now I have to pay for it. First time it's $400 a month, and now it's like $70 a month. What if it rolls in ticks and rats?
I mean, it's possible, and John would obviously guide you on that. That could come under the year of public health. Maybe the opera award could help out in that.
Okay, good. I just tell them that in.
With your manager. And I saw Brian yesterday, although we were talking about something else, but, you know, your manager. But that's, but the mosquito board is a separate board. It's funded by. Well, it's like the Norfolk County sheriffs. They're not under us anymore. You know, that's, no, the sheriffs have their own standing department funded by the state, so, you know.
So you took care of John. I know John's a friend of mine. I know he is.
Oh, John's a good guy.
Now, as for the staking on Highland, what are his questions here, Joe?
I was just wondering which way he was going to go, you know, which way he was going to go. And so Scanlon Drive up, it's just, they wanted to like a small piece of land down the LA 10, I think. Is it, is that the section? Is that what I'm talking about?
I don't want to make a comment without referring to Patrick.
We're not on that space on the agenda. That's coming up later.
Sit tight.
Yeah, okay. All right. And that way we'll have the surveyor.
Thanks for the information.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, anyone else on public comment?
Yes, please.
Matt, she is. Come on up, man.
How are you, gentlemen?
Good.
All right. So I just had a question about consulting firms that the county has used. So we've had the Ripples Group, the Abrams Group. Was there a third one?
For the purposes of.
Just, are those the only two?
They're the ones that did the recent studies on our government, yes.
Yeah, so it's basically a consulting firm. I was just wondering, how much has, how much did that cost us as a county?
The Abrams Group report, I believe, was $79,000. We'll get you the exact amounts, Matt.
Okay.
Feel like the rest of us, I can give you those now.
Sure. I mean, I could make a public records request orally if that works for you.
Either way, it's just.
Sure.
The Ripples Group, I cannot remember off the top of my head. I thought it was around $50,000, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
Clear those numbers up.
All right, cool. Yeah, that's it. That's all I got for you guys.
Thanks.
The Abraham Group was funded several years ago.
Okay, sure.
Happened several years back.
Yeah.
Whereas Ripples, we just hired.
Okay.
In, in terms of the IT thing.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt. Number five, appointments. We have none. All business. Director Cronin, do you have any all business?
I do not.
Good. That takes care of that. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
Six at the agricultural, seven.
Agricultural High School, we have noticed a title change for Evan Maite of Oxford, Mass. As Senior Animal Science Sport Person, effective 7/1/22.
It's motion or second?
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. It is a vote. Next.
Notice the title change for Kim Catan Skelly of Sharon, from Director of Special Education to Director of Student Services, again, for the rate stated, effective 7/1/22.
That was a motion second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Motion to approve the notice of contingent employment for Michaela Gulli.
Gulli Alme. Gulli Alme.
Thank you, of Franklin, Mass. As a student worker, animal science, effective 6/30/22. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next motion, notice of appointment of Stephen Donner of North Annabro as custodian for the salary stated, effective 7/1/22. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, it is a vote. Thank you.
Notice of appointment of Sean Dane of Wapo as a custodian. That would be effective 7/1/22. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Notice of appointment of Christopher Gill as custodian for the rate stated, effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Lastly.
Last one. Notice of promotion of Michael Humphrey of Dedham, replacing Andrea McMahon as custodial supervisor, and that would be effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Facilities.
Chairman, if I could, before Mr. Stady reads, just to point out something for your benefit. There are a total of five different individuals that were hired in FY22 as temporary employees. We're moving, obviously, some of them into permanent to begin FY23.
Right.
Mr. Regan is the plumber. He's in a class by himself.
Right.
Mr. McIntosh, Mr. Labadini are moving just laterally into custodial slots. There are two remaining hires that are junior to those individuals. We're waiting for the final steps of the bumping rights to occur in facilities before we complete the movement of the final two into those permanent slots. But we're beholden to the collective bargaining agreement guidelines for bidding rights. And as soon as that's completed, you receive the final two.
And all this was vetted out during, during the budget, too, with.
Right, right.
And then these are people that have worked out, and they're now taking the bottom positions permanent. I think originally the union had a little issue about them not being in the union, but the state's care of all that.
They agree. Mr. Chairman, for you, were the agricultural appointments some similar? Were those somewhat temporaries that have a permanent?
They were temporary, but they're not, they're not in this bargaining unit.
Okay, okay. All right. That's what I figured. So with no further ado, let me move on to facilities maintenance. Mr. Chairman, your permission, I move notice of appointment of Edison McIntosh of Boston, Mass. To replace John Neal as second shift custodian, and that would be effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Notice appointment of Matthew Labadini of Dedham, Mass., replacing Thomas Brennan as custodian for the rate stated, and that would be, I'm going to assume, effective 7/1/22?
Correct.
It's not there.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
All right. And third, of the facilities, notice appointment of James Regan of Braintree, Mass. To replace John Donovan as plumber foreman for the rate stated, effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner's office.
Aye.
This is also budget-driven, but this will make everything efficient, correct?
Correct.
All right. So first one, Mr. Chairman, notice of regrade for Michelle Labadini of Dedham, Mass. As Human Resource Personnel Manager for the rate stated, effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Second. Notice of regrade for Mark McDonald of Westwood, Mass. As Network Administrator for the rate stated, effective 7/1/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And the last, on the Wallace recreational facility, the notice of contingent employment for Edward Brody McDebit of Boston, Mass. As seasonal grounds crew employee for the rate stated, effective 6/23/22. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Payroll expense warrants, number eight.
All right.
Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I move the following for approval, warrant list for June 29th, 22. Number one, line item 22-52, the payroll of the county in the amount of $183,538.8. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Second, Mr. Chairman, on line item 22-52, parentheses, 26, payroll of the school, the amount of $357,047.83. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Third, on line item 06-05-22, expense for the county, the amount of $208,109.25. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you.
Third, I'm sorry, fourth, line item 22-12, parentheses, A, expense for the school, I move the amount $40,903.77. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. And lastly, I move, Mr. Chairman, line item 6-24-22, for the Wallace recreational facility, the sales tax, the amount of $2,876.83. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Question, I did not see opera on here. Opera was, I'm not listening on the warrant. Where are the, where the opera was? They're not here. We're missing Bellingham and Canton.
Right.
Well, you voted them, so.
Well, we'll vote again.
We voted one, we'll vote the other one. But normally, they're on the warrant, too.
They are. They're, it's kind of redundant, because you do vote them separately, but we'll be sure to make sure those three vote, three votes against those awards carry through on the warrant.
Okay.
Okay. You still have two more votes to take on our part.
Right. Bellingham, who's the other one?
Norwood.
Oh, I missed it. Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure we're going to be not holding back that check. If John Conley wants to go to Vegas, so, you know, got to take care of him. Okay.
Okay.
So we're on opera.
Number nine, opera wards for approval.
Okay.
Earlier we did Canton, and we have two others today. Director Cronin?
You do. Yes. Yes, sir. So in addition to Canton, we have another award for the town of Bellingham. This totaled $15,732. This particular award falls under the category of supporting public health. Bellingham has put forward the request to replace 33 old windows in their public library. These windows will prevent the spread of COVID-19 in the library, whereas the library hosts many public groups and activities inside of building all the way around. This particular renovation is an eligible cost, and by the way, reflects, I believe, the fourth or fifth award for the town of Bellingham, who continues to be quite active. So for your consideration, the total award for Bellingham would be $15,732.
Anybody from Bellingham here?
Do we have anyone on from Bellingham?
No.
No.
Last call. Okay.
I was going to say, I thought this was like the fourth or fifth. It depends. Several.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. That's good. All right, Mr. Chairman, I could move, if you wish. Move approval of the opera ward from Norfolk County to the town of Bellingham in the category of public health, and for the amount this time of $15,732 in accordance to the applications submitted and approved by our team. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is the fifth, by the way.
Nice.
The third and final award this week is for the town of Norwood.
Right.
This is for a comprehensive mental health response under the category of supporting public health. I believe this is Norwood's second award. As I mentioned, this award totals $115,475. In concise terms, the project will fund a mental health training awareness program director to train the town and school personnel to recognize the signs and symptoms of mental disorders, employ crisis deescalation techniques, establishing linkages with community-based mental health agencies, and refer individuals with mental illness to appropriate services and educate them about resources for individuals with mental health disorder. This is an eligible expense under this category, includes salary as well as fringe expenses and training.
Can't do enough in that area, particularly now, mental health is seriously a serious issue. With pleasure, Mr. Chairman, I would move then to grant this opera ward from Norfolk County to the town of Norwood in the area of public health for the amount of $115,475. Again, pursuant to the application that was approved, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the opera ward to the town of Norwood. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Thank you very much. Again, this continues our working with federal government, and our cities and towns will be more to follow in July.
Briefly, while I'll pick up my comments in, under the opera comment, sorry.
Okay, why don't we just jump for one minute to number 12, so we can, we can talk to Mr. Burke here while he's here. Item number 12, the order of return for the alteration and discontinuance of a portion of High Street in Randolph with the required general releases and indemnifications agreements and the alteration of the discontinuance plan. In your packet, commissioners, and earlier we signed off, based on what we do here today, is a note from the county surveyor, Patrick Higgins, who's on with us. This is an order of return on a petition for alteration of a portion of High Street dated 6/15/2020. This order was prepared by a Waymouth Company and a planned land surveyor. General releases and indemnifications are with it. The recommendation from the county commissioners for the review and vote to sign the order of return for the alteration of the two areas of the Norfolk County layout on High Street. The original layout was May 3rd, 1938, in Randolph, and for the chairman to sign and date the alteration plan. So the original documents and plans, three sets, will be filed at the Norfolk County Clerk's records in the engineering department with the town of Randolph town clerk and with the registered deeds. Again, we have Patrick, our county surveyor, with us. We have a gentleman from Norwood, from Randolph. Come on up, sir. What's your question? How can we help you?
Oh, I just want to know what, what part of the High Street they taking?
We're not taking, it's actually a discontinuance. So the, the right-of-way used to be 66 feet wide, and it's going to be reduced down to 33 feet. The land that's being discontinued in each side of the right-of-way is reverting back to the direct abutters. And it's, it's located between Scanlon Drive and Billing Street.
Is that where the Lantana is, that area there?
Yes.
Okay, that's the part.
All right. You understand it? Did you follow this through the process? It is, okay. All right. Thank you.
That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
And you'll be here for the money.
Yeah, that's right. Your journey down here, we don't want you to.
Right.
I want to go visit.
I guess, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good seeing you again.
Okay, on number 12, commissioners.
All right, thanks.
Let's say you want the order of return for the alteration and discontinuance of a portion of High Street with the required general releases and indemnification agreements, which are not all signs.
Question, if I could, for you, of course. Patrick?
Yes, Commissioner Stady.
Yeah. So what happens on something like this? The town of Randolph requested this, or their engineering department?
The town, town administrator submitted a petition back in November of 2020. They put it on the agenda. The commissioners scheduled the meeting on December 16th, I believe. And then the secondary meeting was on the, the, the end of December in 2020, and they voted to discontinue contingent upon five of the direct abutters signing general lease and indemnification clauses, and, and that the monuments would be set. So we, the, the delay for a year was, one, one, two of the abutters were not signing the releases. We, we, we got involved this spring, and we're able to obtain the last two releases, so that this can move forward. It was already voted for discontinuance.
So this is actually exciting before I was on the board, actually, when I think about it, right? December 2020. So what's, what's the public purpose? Like what, how does that help Randolph or the county or both? How does that help by doing this? What's the point of that?
The town, the, the town requested it so that the, the budding property that's being let go of as part of the county way is now going to become private property. And the direct abutter has proposed, now that it's on private property, they're going to make improvements for sidewalks and crosswalks that the town thinks are needed in that area, from what I understand.
Okay, I see. So while it was county-owned or county-laid out, those things couldn't take place?
I'm, I'm not aware of the, you know, the circumstances, but my understanding is that it was discontinued. And I, I've seen a design plan that shows improvements, and it was to narrow down the width of the roadway and make it safer for people who are crossing, because it's, it's 66 feet wide right-of-way. They're going down to 33 feet and adding in crosswalks and sidewalks that aren't there currently. And then the developer's going to pay for that on the private property.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Okay.
Any other questions? We need a motion?
What's the exact motion, Mr. Chairman? Would be at the, move that, at the, the foregoing return and order be filed?
Right.
Accepted? Go with that? All right. Mr. Chairman, in reference to the materials prepared by our engineer regarding the town of Randolph, and in particular, the apostles outlined in his memorandum to us concerning High Street, Randolph, Mass., and the discontinuance of it, a portion of it, I would move that the foregoing return and order be filed, accepted, recorded, and the attested copy thereof be transmitted to the clerk of the town of Randolph, within which the limits of said public way described therein lies, so that the same may be recorded by said clerk within 10 days in the book of records kept in said town for that purpose, and taking the action related there to, to cover it.
Motion's in. A motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. It will be recorded as soon as I sign tomorrow. We, we signed everything else. Okay, we're going to go back to number 10. This could, you're in transfers for approval. Director Cronin, there are a couple in your packet?
There are two in the packet. I'll take a motion on each. The first is to transfer a total of $20,953 from the commissioner's office. Boiler insurance, general liability insurance, auto insurance, deductible general, general liability, miscellaneous insurance, same amount into legal fees to complete our obligations for FY22.
So we're moving, what, motion, motion made?
Yeah, sure. I just want to see where it was. I'm sorry. I apologize. We're, we're moving a transfer totaling $20,953?
Correct.
For the items that have been described in the memo dated this date, with boiler, liability, auto, and deductible. And with Debit, legally.
Correct.
Okay. All right. I approve that. Motion made.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, I have a quick question. This is the normal end of the year transfers.
It is.
We're going to keep today's meeting open into July for other similar things.
In this case, these transfers are from one account to another.
And this is from existing funds. This is, okay. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have another one now.
That's already signed. All right. Move that we approve the transfer in a total amount of $8,470. That said transfer to be taken from the telephone account, electric, fuel, and rubbish. All of it adds up to $8,470. So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This again is a transfer from existing funds that we do this traditionally at the end of the year. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Who's taking the transfer? What was that being transferred to? I saw where it was coming from. Where's it going to?
Taxes.
Taxes, okay. I probably should include it.
From, from taxes to telephone, electric, fuel and rubbish.
Thank you. This concludes the uh, the end of the year transfers for today. More may be coming, but more may not. So today, we're not going to adjourn. We're going to recess until later in, in July. Purposes of closing the books. Next is in your packet is a request of the Maki Sushi Scholarship Fund for this, the rate for the Maki Sushi Golf Tournament, which is held every year at um, President's Golf Course for a number of years. I'm, I'd, I'd, I'd be depressed, I'd be hard pressed to say it's the thirtieth. I was going to say the twentieth, the thirtieth. This young man from Milton, a hockey player who lost his life in an automobile accident thirty years ago.
Yeah. Uh, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So we've had now, and I've had the pleasure obviously with you in approving many of these tournaments that have just come before us and they're all for good causes. I'm just curious, do we ever, as a part of procedure, run it by our department?
It goes through the department head before it comes to us.
Beautiful. That's all I wanted to know.
I was working on one with him today that may end up here.
That's fair. So he has input on it.
He's the one that brought this to us.
They booked him in.
All right, great, great. That's good. That's, I didn't know that. I want to make sure he's part of the chain. That's fine. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's great to know. Um, I would move approval to grant to the Maki Sushi Scholarship Fund Golf Tournament for July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the F four asked um, waiver of the fees and rate reduction for the tournament. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded relative to the Maki Sushi Golf Tournament. All in favor?
Aye.
Good, great. Number thirteen. One thirty bid openings, we have none. Number fourteen. Contract awards. We're going to have Nancy join us.
Yes.
Nance? She comes.
Nancy's been very busy lately. High season.
We have three contract awards today. Nancy Rockwell, our procurement specialist is here with us, director of procurement. I think I'm in the proper order here, Nancy. First one there, Walson Recreation Facility.
For the fifteenth T walk?
Fifteenth T walk path, yes.
Yes. Um, we had um, four bidders for this. Bowers excavating was the low, lowest responsible bidder and the amount was thirty-three thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Um, he's one of the companies that have done several projects for us over the years.
We're familiar with them and they were a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions, Commissioner? How about a motion? There's a lot of two.
Sorry, move approval to a little bit.
Bowers excavate incorporated.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Next. Construction of a concrete tennis. Pickleball court.
Yes. Um, recommend award to Folsom Corporation. He was the only quote and the amount of seventeen thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars.
Folsom Corporation.
Motion made to approve?
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
I might have mentioned that I, I, I learned about pickleball within the last two or three years, but I, I get lots of calls about pickleball. Hopefully we can make our more competitive court there. Okay, next is the Facility Maintenance Department. Power clean and paint railings at the Superior Court.
Yes, we had um, we had two bids for this. You need to reject the bid of inspect coatings. They were non-responsive. And recommend that the contract be awarded to the Alston Company in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Do you need a vote of the commissioners to reject the first bid?
Okay, this is going to be two motions. Motion to reject the first bidder and then to accept the second.
What's the first bidder's name?
Inspect coatings.
Inspect coating. All right. So I would move, Mr. Chairman, that we reject the bid on inspect coating for the reasons presented this afternoon. So moved.
Second. On the rejection of the first bid, all motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
It would be recommended to award a contract to the Alston Company in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Alston Company?
Alston, A U L S O one. They are loans actually presently due in the dome.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we award the bid to Alston Company in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's presented today. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to award the power clean and paint railings at Superior Court to the Alston Company. All in favor?
Aye.
As a side, I was over there today with Director Crone and Director um, Buckley and we toured and met with the foreman and the architect. The, the top part's going to be done in August, which will be good.
Right.
And the scaffold will be gone and uh, we're confident that based on their past performance that we can do, do these railings, which is very much needed. And we have a little celebration coming in October, so we'll hopefully everything will be ready. Thank you. Next is.
Give me one second. What, are we signing everything here or just?
Everywhere where there's a, there's a, there's like a tag, a red, a green tag. Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Next is a drain manhole and drain line replacement on an easement in Old River Place behind a registered building. Nance?
Yes, we have five, um, five bids submitted and the lowest responsive bidder was Flynn Enterprise Corp. And they have bid, their bid amount was a hundred and thirty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. We're choosing to exercise alternate one in the amount of ten thousand dollars for a total contract price of one hundred and forty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
I need a motion on
where?
The drain replacement work on Old River Place as.
So is it, is Flynn?
Flynn Enterprise.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, I'll move the uh, award of the bid to Flynn Enterprise Corporation, this date uh, for the total contract price of a hundred and forty thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. And lastly, today, we have another award on uh, updating and printing of the employee handbook.
Yes.
Our report. Go ahead.
We sent our post to three companies. We received two. The UMass Boston Collins Center was the lowest responsive in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
I never knew they did this kind of work.
They actually have a lot of experience in the HR field, according to the presentation.
That's good. That's good. I was trying to do business with them before and they were the runner-up on the on the county bid when we had to get infamous Abraham report.
So they're going to overhaul the whole handbook and upgrade?
Get it printed.
That's right. Right.
And we're going to keep it updated, aren't we?
Great, great. That's great. Okay.
It's nineteen, what did we say? Nineteen seventy-eight, something like that? I think it's time.
Unbelievable.
George McDonald.
Yeah.
And Jim Collins will be rolling over in their grave.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Well, with pleasure, I'll move, Mr. Chairman, you want uh, the bid to um, uh, UMass Boston Collins Center in the amount of fourteen thousand dollars uh, for the purpose of our uh, employee handbook book to be upgraded. So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded to award the updating and printing of the Norfolk County Employee Handbook to the Collins Center of Boston. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Hey, buddy.
Okay, we're moving right along.
Yeah.
Number fifteen. Report on American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. Uh, Director Collins, Director Crone, Commissioner Collins.
You got another job?
I don't know, did I?
Not bad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so as Commissioner Stady, Stady alluded to earlier during the presentation of the Opera Award to Canton. Norfolk County continues to march forward with its awards. We now have just under nine, excuse me, just under twenty million dollars in total um, awards uh, funded or just under fifteen percent of the total grant. Um, we have a total of eighty-three applications that have been filed. As of today, all of the uh, requests that are at level three have been up to date. Uh, so in other words, we're not, the county is not holding up any awards. Um, the process involving Clifton Larson and Powers and Sullivan is working quite well. They're collaborating with our, our communities and helping them through their grant applications. Earlier today, we received a very highly complimentary email from the town of Stoughton uh, who was grateful for the support and help the county and our uh, agency, Clifton Larson and Powers and Sullivan providing. So things is going along quite well. Just a couple of quick updates. Last week I mentioned I was hoping to have an update for you on the dashboard uh, feature of uh, the Clifton Larson portal. Um, it is now open and it has live data in it. I have not opened it yet. It was unsuccessful last night. They sent me a rebooted um, transactional um, credential this morning, so I'll, I'll try it again today. Uh, this is an exciting development because now instead of handing you the simple spreadsheet, I'll be able to give you weekly updates um, across the board on all of the uh, elements and, and, and um, funding and information that you can use when you reach your communities and, and get out there and understand where the money's going. Uh, so the dashboard is going to be a great tool. Um, and then finally, as you know, we have a misunderstanding, we believe, regarding the revenue loss um, matter um, that was revealed to us in a treasury correspondence a couple of weeks ago. This misunderstanding is something that's important to us to clarify with the treasury before we move forward further with any revenue loss applications. We're currently two in the queue that I'm thinking, Bellamy and Dedham. Um, Senator Markey's office helped um, push our query back to the, up to the treasury last week. Um, not surprisingly, we haven't heard from them yet, so I'm going to try to reach them today to try to expedite this, what I think is a very simple clarifying answer. But the uh, the matter is so um, high risk that we need clarification before we take any next steps. Happy to answer any questions on our relative to all that.
Commissioners?
Yeah, would you have permission? Uh, Mr. Chairman, do we have any uh, more, you know, feedback from Braintree? Braintree had issues, but then they were working on it and did they ever, did they forward?
No, we awarded the um, their total revenue loss benefit um, a couple of months ago.
Yes, yeah.
Um, but no, we have not.
Nothing else. Okay.
No, we, we have several communities, I think I alluded to this, Commissioner Stady, that have large ARPA awards delegated to them. Quincy is one of them. They have won awards. Braintree's won. They have won award. Brookline has an awful lot of money. They have no awards, but we have been in contact with them. We know they're working on it. Um, we know they're generating a plan. Um, I've always, you know, early on, Commissioner Stady, you and I went to Canton. I think Canton was the first place we visited from upstate. And I was so impressed with Randy, Randy um, talk about uh, the town of Canton's approach with, which I think is replicated with some of these other communities, which is, you know what? Brief, study, evaluate and find out how are we going to optimize these dollars during this timeframe? Uh, and that strategic thinking and planning, I think, benefits the communities in the long run. And that's why we haven't seen a lot of activity on the big communities right out of the gate because they have so much money. They want to thoughtfully place it where it's going to be most effective. And that was certainly the case with Brookline when we spoke to the town manager over there. So.
Makes sense.
Um, you are going to see quite a lot of activity, I'd predict, in the next six months.
Yeah. So some of them are taking a wait-and-see approach, also to see how the economy goes and also, okay, yeah, it's tucking away for maybe next year, right? So, okay. That's good. That's good.
Um, one other item, an administrative one, but it's important. Currently, the grant agreement with the communities indicate they have to encumber funds associated with the awards by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, which is six months before the obligation period of the grant ends. The reason we put that in place is because we want to find out um, two years from now, how much money um, associated with awards that have been given has not been spent, so we can claw back any unspent dollars and reassess, redistribute them in the remaining six months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the final rule, uh, for all its clarity and help, does provide some um, room for interpretation about what obligation means. Because the final rule will explain that funds associated with the grant must be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four to pay, to be paid against um, by twenty twenty-six. And I always understood this process to be very simply the, the treasury saying, we understand that you're going to have large capital projects, infrastructure, for example, that have bonding and other contractual obligations. And sometimes the work associated with that contract takes time to complete and the treasury's giving you time to make that payment. So it's sort of like a, a, a payment period window. However, the word obligation is now falling into an interesting dialogue and I've asked Minz Levin to provide a legal um, opinion that we can share with our communities because I'm anticipating some communities may say, well, what does obligate mean? Um, if I'm being paid, um, you know, if I've got salaried people, does that mean that I cannot pay them after December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four because the obligation is met? Um, there are a lot of kind of nuanced areas that I'm going to ask Minz to close with their opinion. Uh, and then we'll share it with the community. So well in advance of any issues, um, they'll understand our rules and, and of course have been in touch with our other county partners to let them know that we'll share this with them as well. So looking ahead, just trying to put some proper controls out there because what we've learned is, and you could certainly understand, communities don't like surprises. They like the rules and they like the rules to be followed and for the most part, it's, it's working quite well. So I'm just looking down the road at something two years from now that I think will require um, some, some strong management skills to navigate the closure of this, this grant. Okay? That is it for my update now.
Well, I want to say to everyone, particularly to you, Director Crone, that this is our last meeting of the year, so to speak, our fiscal year. Um, we'll think back a year ago when we started all this, how we felt about apprehension and everything when there's so far so good. I mean, it's been some bumps, but we, we we're showing that we're going to approve, you know, put our best foot forward and work with everyone and so far so good. So I mean, I'm looking forward to much better but more busier, busier time in the second year because uh, it would be a shame not to use these funds for purposes that is again. So kudos to everyone. We'll, we'll attack it again in fact, July. Okay. Report of the county director.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I apologize in advance. I have several items to hit. I'll go quickly. Um, first of all, uh, this morning, Chairman Shay, Assistant Director Buckley and I took a walk to the Dome of Superior Court on the vendor Alston Corporation. Wanted us to view the status of the project of uh, repainting the dome. Uh, from a street level, we decided not to go up the uh, the catwalk, not to the roof. We observed that the, the project is looking great. Uh, what you see right now is principally two coats, one white, one yellow uh, base. There will be one more application of a, of a high sheen to bring out the, the glossy gold look of the dome. Um, the vendor reports that structurally everything is intact. The eagle presents well. It's a solid cast item. The railing around uh, the porch at the top that holds um, the American flag, all secured, repainted. All the repointing that was required under the contract beneath the dome is intact and good. There, um, so they'll be wrapping up by the end of July, weather permitting, um, that project. Um, they do have some, um, they own some work rate relative to some windows up on that level that are encased in lead that are cracked and they'll be fixing that kind of low, low, uh, low-level work. Um, and should be achieved easily by the end of, on July. So um, my compliments to Alston. They've been a pleasure to work with, highly organized, great to communicate with, uh, skilled craftsmen. Um, one of the things we asked them for was uh, photos associated with the before and after and they, they'll happily send that to us. And in addition, um, the foreman told us that he's going to fly a drone over the project at the completion once all the scaffolding's down. So we'll have a, a good video representation and high definition of the product. Um, we'll also share that with the Dome of Historical Society. So briefly, it was a, it was a beautiful morning for a walk and a great update.
Do you think, uh, what's up, Mr. Chairman? Do you think that the court would be finished and ready to go by the end of August? Or is there?
Uh, we, so.
Turn to all the other things?
Uh, yes, we're hoping the rail project that Nancy just brought forward to you uh, will be completed by the end of August.
Wow.
Again, weather permitting. Uh, that's all I'm saying too.
Okay, yeah.
Um, for your information, I'm, I've reached out to Chairman Reeder and Chairwoman Charles to confirm uh, tentatively at this point, the four advisory board meeting dates in, in the coming fiscal year. So at this point, I'm, I'm confirming the chairman have agreed to September fourteenth, December twenty-first, April twelfth, twenty twenty-three and May seventeen, twenty twenty-three as the four uh, cyclical meetings of the advisory board. Chairwoman Charles in FY twenty-two held um, virtually monthly meetings for the finance committee. I think she was trying to up, up the speed on some of the issues that Norfolk County was facing. She's not revealed to me. She intends to have that kind of a frequent schedule in FY twenty-three. But she did affirm that um, these dates work uh, in conjunction with the finance committee and the advisory board. So that's FYI. Um, just mindful that as Chairman Shay read the open meeting uh, announcement today that July fifteenth is the last day the legislature has enabled um, remote meetings to occur, uh, called hybrid meetings. Um, Bill Buckley and I have talked extensively about what happens if um, the, the, the state house is abuzz right now trying to get a budget passed. There's an awful lot going on with uh, women's uh, health issues and bills passing. Um, they're moving through their priorities and we do expect some kind of an answer from them shortly within the next week or so.
Okay.
Bill reminded me they almost waited until the last minute to do the latest one. So um, we also agree it's hard to imagine them not doing it. I think this is a tremendous asset for public meeting experiences. Both for your ability to see your constituents and for people who can't make it into Dedham to virtually join you and contribute to the public discourse. So we'll let you know if that emerges. Um, this past week, um, Joe Dioria um, and I attended a, an audit meeting with Lynch Marini in preparation for FY twenty-one cycle. The commissioners may know from our. The commissioners may know from a previous update that I'd asked department heads affected by the needs to produce records to move their product into the Lynch Marina portal by June seventeenth. We learned in our meeting earlier this week that some have moved that material up to the portal, most have not. I'll be sending out a follow up email probably today, asking department heads to notify our auditor if they intend to produce their records in person or use the portal. The reason we're pushing for this activity now and how and why it's important is because the longer we wait, the less product the auditor has to look at the complete book system of the of the county, and it delays his work. Our goal is to achieve a quick, swift review and optimize the audit cycle so that this becomes a regular piece of work that all of us enjoy every year. And so grabbing the information they're asking for and sending it out should not be a heavy lift, so I'll be pushing that again today, it's very important. We have been given notice that the agricultural school may, and I say may, need an advisory board meeting in July or August, simply because the agricultural high school negotiations with the teachers' union are progressing. And it's possible that before the start of school, they will have a signed contract, or a signed contract in principle that need be approved by the agricultural school. So I'll alert the commissioners, if that is the case, it would be a single use or single purpose agenda. Chairman Redden has already indicated, just let me know, so I'll alert the commissioners even when we receive favorable smoke signals from our friends in Walpole relative to that contract status. Stoughton District Court, we're on track, I have to tell you, Adco's doing a great job giving us almost daily updates. The masonry work is done, the sheet metal work is done. And tentatively right now, we're being informed that the rooftop units may be placed on the roof as early as next week. I want to express my public support and thanks to John McGowan, who, as you know, has been using some used lose time here in June, but he has come in during the month of June to check on the Stoughton District Court, he knows it's a top priority. And he's been great circling back with Adco to make sure they stay on task and that the coordination of their work is seamless with the courthouse staff. So all things are looking good in Stoughton, and hopefully we'll have some results within July. Last week, I filed the electronic application as requested by the National Appropriate Settlement Account Request Setup. You may recall that the United, excuse me, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office had coordinated a settlement agreement on behalf of cities and towns in Massachusetts. This portal is a process of simply registering Norfolk County as a potential recipient. I still have no idea how much money we may be entitled to, but I will inform you later on as I hear more, but we did meet the deadline, and it's all in. Regarding the chief information officer, update higher and also the IT transition. I sent along a brief update to the commissioners, letting them know that after receiving fourteen resumes, they were screened down to five with the assistance of advisory board Kevin Calcutta. Using the services of advisory board member Chuck Phelan, Michelle and I, and Chuck interviewed three of those candidates last week. One candidate of the five had withdrawn, and the other one never responded, so we were in play for three. There were three vibrant interviews, all three of us unanimously concluded two of the three. Should be welcome back for a second interview, those are scheduled for next Wednesday and Thursday, I believe. We are going to conduct a different style interview next week, which will feature a writing sample and an assessment center for the candidates to explain their communication, decision making, and critical thinking skills under relatively stressful environment. So those will be held next week. Regarding the IT transition, as the commissioners may know, we began meeting with members of the Registry of Deeds on June seventh. We met again on June fourteenth. We did not meet last week due to vacation time, but we were back at it yesterday. To date, we've covered a lot of ground relative to the upcoming transition, including an introduction of roles and responsibilities as they currently sit between Mark McDonald, Dan Caporata, and of course Cole Papaviano. Members of the registry staff that have joined us the first two weeks were former Assistant Register Rich Kennedy, as well as, I believe, Second Assistant Register Ed Wheeler. This past week, Marguerite Lee joined us. Our goal, as you know, commissioners, is to make sure that as we lead up to the hire of the CIO, that the registry understands, as we publicly stated many times, that the support they have enjoyed to date will be uninterrupted, that the work that is being done up to date will be consistent. One of the things that I've asked the registry to do is confirm that they would allow Mr. McDonald to be a redundant backup to Mr. Caporato when he has some upcoming scheduled vacation time this summer. We want to be respectful of the register's interest in this process. So the communication is open, we have gone through task lists involving each and every daily, weekly, monthly task here at the county, as well as the registry, so we understand exactly what kind of workflows in front of us. And then finally, I spoke this morning at a brief update on our financial position in a minute about the readiness of the FY twenty three budget that was approved by the advisory board under the IT department to be prepared to pay for contracts and services, as well as salaries associated with the consolidation. So we'll move on that as effective July first. Marguerite had some concerns over whether or not we're really ready, what would happen if we had an emergency and so forth. And I explained, you know, we'll we'll be there to support them as as we would as if there was no consolidation. And I also asked if her or the register had any concerns leading up to July first, to let me know as soon as possible. So our transition will continue, and it will continue into FY twenty three, and likely more frequently, once the CIO is brought on board. Performance evaluations associated with the department heads have been have begun, these are the final stage performance evaluations for folks. When they recall back in October, we started the evaluation process, we met again in January. I think I've completed four so far, and I've got several more in the next week or so to complete. And those will wrap up the FY twenty two evaluations. I find these to be very helpful to, you know, to take twenty, thirty minutes, meet with my colleagues who are department heads, who, you know, I don't get a lot of time with normally, to sit down, breathe, discuss, you know, what are the concerns, how are you doing any goals? And all of them, I ask at the end of the process, is there anything for me you need to make you a better worker? So it's a productive conversation, and I have to tell each of the commissioners, it's a pleasure to work with all these department heads, they're all great people, great experience, good workers, and Norfolk County is lucky to have them.
It's good to hear, it's great, it's great.
Thank you. In one of those meetings, Phil and Tosca and I have been working on a way to optimize his time, as you know, for many years, Phil's taken these meeting minutes, he's listening to us now. And one of the things I asked him to look into were alternative ways to speed up or streamline minute taking process. Phil looked into, he did a nice job, he looked into speech to text software, some people call it Dragon Speed, other people call it YouTube, whatever. It converts the spoken word into a text or language, and these documents sometimes can be very, very long, they're picking up every single word, the meeting minutes can look like books every week. So the speech to text option does not appear to be feasible. Phil did reach out to several other communities and counties, and he found examples of where the meeting minutes were taken under terms called action minutes. According to the Attorney General's Office, the meeting minutes have to meet a certain standard. They have to accurately represent what a reasonable person not present would understand was the business conducted. You don't need to go into great details, you don't have to do word for word transcription, but you do have to give some level of detail so that they understand the flow of the meeting, what was there if they weren't. So Phil was able to find a couple of examples from the county of Plymouth and the town of Braintree, which I thought were fine minutes, but they're not detailed minutes, and they would save him a lot of time and still represent and reflect the work that you do quite accurately. I asked him to get one more town so that we can see how this flows, so we have something statistically to fall back on. And when he does, I'll bring those examples before you, so you can examine and look to see, is this representative of the kind of meeting minute content that you would expect going forward? And again, it's being generated by the simple fact that Phil spends roughly one day a week doing meeting minutes out of his total hours a week. And as a professional with a background like Phil, we we certainly do respect and like the meeting minutes, but I think if there's any way we can streamline it and bring those minutes, the the time he commits to this process down, he's optimized and he can do other things, so.
But on that point, if I may, we were talking about it, I mean, I find the minutes to be very concise and tight. They seem to be almost, like you're saying, action oriented. You know, like Commissioner Collins made a motion, or so and so voted this, there's not a lot of fluff in there, so I'll be curious to see how that translates.
I I mean. I agree with the commissioner, I think seeing his understanding where we can come from and whether or not it's worth it to go in that direction. It's your choice.
Yeah.
You're the ones that, you know, sign off in the meeting minutes, so I just thought.
There's no automated medium to get what he's doing now, you understand what I'm saying? I know Dragon and the other thing is, it's almost a chronographer, it'd be like word for word for word, we don't want that. Minutes would be booked, we don't need that, but I understand, you know, in terms of the letter of the law, you have to kind of, you know, capture the the spirit. Correct. Happens, so maybe there's just a way to shortcut that.
I think I think it's good to reflect and look at how we do our business from time to time, and this is one of Phil's goals, and he did a fair amount of research on it, so we'll bring forward that information more clearly so you can read them and see them, make your own interpretation if if any changes were to.
Okay.
So good.
Are you saying he spends a whole day preparing the minutes? Be interested to see if that's normal for other towns or whatever, I mean, maybe we're giving too much detail, I don't know. Be good to see, be good to look at, all right.
My last item, I want to spend a few minutes doing it, given the importance of it, is our year end spending closure. So Phil has been kind enough to generate what's called an expense report, and I've been looking at our accounts since the beginning of June, watching the unexpendable balances on the various accounts. And as you know, Phil and Nancy send out notices to the department heads on encumbrance deadlines, reserve lists and so forth to coach the departments into optimizing about their their lineups. So in Jan, in June, we looked at that, a lot of money lying around. We've been feverishly signing transfers, almost, I don't know, three, four, five, six of them a day, you did two today, this is typically your end spending. But there were a couple of areas I just wanted to call out real quickly as a result of going through it this morning with the financial team on our year end position. First of all, let me state that from a revenue perspective, I think Joe's on a call, I mentioned last week, our revenues are coming in strong. There is a sign that at the back end of fiscal year twenty two, the revenues are waning, which is expected, given the interest rate impact, but nevertheless, year to date revenues for FY twenty two, I believe, are over four million dollars above benchmark projected. So from a revenue perspective, thumbs up, we're doing it fine.
Good.
On the spending side, just a couple of highlights, and just go through these very quickly. We had funded a considerable amount in data, the data processing account in FY twenty two for asset management software, that's eighty thousand dollars, we're not doing it. I mentioned that before, that money's going to go back to the general fund. There's an additional forty one, forty one thousand dollars in that account for data processing that Mark McDonald, who was on vacation this week, and Nancy will clarify. Before I move on, another thank you, Mark McDonald, he's been using vacation time, but so he doesn't lose it. We had our weekly transmission, transition meeting for IT yesterday. He showed up on his vacation day, came to the meeting, prepared a document, and I told you how, what a pleasure it is to work with these department heads. Mark's a good example, I want to thank him publicly for coming in on a vac day and delivering a nice product and helping the transition along. But when he becomes more available, Nancy will speak to him about what appears to be a forty thousand dollar surplus there. Let's see. There's a the treasurer's office has a ten thousand dollar legal line item that's funded for legal services. I'm going to have to reach out to the treasurer and determine if his legal consultant is looking to get invoiced for the services he provided to the treasurer this year. That was ten thousand dollars. Just a handful, I think it's important to let you guys know what's going on here.
And those could still be done within the next.
We have two days.
Oh, wow.
We've got to accommodate these funds by the end of June, so that's our goal, to clean up these pieces.
Yeah.
See, Patrick's on the line, Nancy's going to be calling you about some money you have in employee miscellaneous supplies and materials, not a lot of money, but it's twelve hundred bucks, Patrick, I might want to talk to her about that, she'll be calling you. Hold on, there's a couple more. There were, the schools activities in their accounts is quite expansive, as you can understand with an eleven million dollar budget. We've been receiving a fair amount of transfer requests as they clean up and optimize their budget. There are a couple of areas, including the contractual services for ten thousand dollars that I believe the trustees agreed to fund for the tuition study. But the funds associated with that don't appear to be liquidated at this time, and that work I think was done.
Lions group, they didn't get paid?
According to this, no, that's one of the things that I asked Phil to follow up.
Yeah.
February.
February.
I think it was delivered.
We 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 took our vote on the rate based on that study.
That was in January.
Yeah.
We took the rate in February, remember, to get the bills out, so we definitely want to pay that, definitely.
Let me ask a question.
That ten thousand dollars is for Spanish classes.
Ah, we have clarification, okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Great. We had guessed, okay, we had guessed it was this because it was under contrast with the tensions. Okay, so that's cleared up.
Good, that's good.
You're saying.
Say we didn't pay the Lions group, and we missed it, then no one billed us, we didn't process. We get it the next year, you get a call from the Lions group, which I'm sure you would, and they'd say, hey, where's my ten thousand? What manner, we have to go back and regenerate in the new year.
You would have, correct, there would be a supplemental appropriation.
Okay, so it's good to get all these done.
Oh, yeah.
Any of these things that aren't, let's say now the books close June thirty, right?
Yep.
Okay, so it's almost akin to a town, whatever's left over is left over, that convert to free cash or into.
Free cash surplus.
Okay, surplus, so at some point, I bet, but we're all curious, when we get the books closed, when do we get a snapshot of how we did at when the books close, like where we are?
Joe's on the line, and I'm going to guess to say that the book's closed July tenth.
Okay.
But I believe his first balance showing surplus will come out in August, is that correct, Joe? Takes a little bit, yeah, he's he's on.
Well, I think, I'm thinking.
Sorry. Yeah, it'll probably be close early August, unfortunately, I have a week's vacation in the end of July, and a couple of days off in mid-July for a family wedding. So usually I have it by the twentieth, but I don't think that's going to happen this year. Usually it's done by July twentieth, but it probably going to be the first week in August I'll be done.
But you could give us a ballpark, maybe, you know, a ballpark of how we're doing?
Yeah, I can definitely give you a ballpark, probably by the second week in July. I probably won't have the reserve list by then from Nancy, you know, so that's just the ballpark before we back out the reserves, but definitely.
Good.
Yeah, look forward to it, thank you, Joe.
Uh, thank you. Some of the other items we flagged, the Wallace and Recreation Facility at eighty five hundred dollars budgeted for the sign on Route ninety three, Joe. That was the breakaway sign, and we've had difficulty with Mast on four. So Nancy, I don't believe we can put a breakaway sign down anymore, but there is some work to be done, and she's going to check with the golf course to see how far along we are with the replacement of the sign in some other fashion, so we'll lose that money. Phil's going to check with the schools on a twenty seven thousand dollar electrical panel surplus. And let's see. We did very good spending down almost all our capital dollars with a couple of exceptions, there was a hundred thousand dollar item that was not spent relative to an air exchange proposal for Superior Court. Other than that, we're in very good shape to close FY twenty two, we went through the accounts and between Phil and Nancy and some of the work they do to close it out, we're in good shape. So I thought I'd spend a few minutes explaining that to you, bringing you inside the budget briefly, not too long, though.
No.
If you have any questions, how can they answer?
That was good, that was good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
It's good.
Thank you, any other questions of the director of government?
I would say overall, it's good to see that revenues are good, right? And you're getting money, I would say we're going to be in a positive position when we close the books, but.
It is, and one of the things, I'm going to give you a peek, Dick, one of my, one of my thinking, I I think a year from now, that will not be the case.
That's what I'm afraid of, it will.
I I think it's reality, and and one of the things that the Abrahams Group brought out, which I think was really spot on, is the notion that our reserves, our our stabilization account needs to be fortified in a way to allow a county, a county to survive a couple of bad years. What I do recognize when I look at local communities like my own or like yours, we have ample ready aid funds to cover operating budgets, but many of the communities are built upon property taxes, a very, very stable level of revenue that can, you know, withstand economic downturns. That's not the case with county government, our assessments are strong, we'll get our assessments, but the registry revenue, which is a significant portion of our of our revenue picture, is volatile and it has been in the past, and we recognize that when the economy goes south, registry collections reflect that. So most communities have about ten percent of their omnibus operating budget set aside for stabilization. That's a normal, you know, triple A community guideline. We're trying to achieve a higher percentage in our stabilization fund, closer to fifteen, up to twenty percent, because we're different, and when our revenue drops like a rock, and we need to write out two, possibly three years. Because we're different. And when our revenue drops like a rock and we need to write out two, possibly three years of negative. Growth, the stabilization will help us weather the storm. So in FY twenty-three, when we meet for the advisory board in September. I'm gonna assess as much, uh, assess where we can put funds into the same, the same form, uh, OPEB. Uh, stabilization and of course FY twenty-three surplus, so we get some things done.
Good.
I'm gonna pack as much as I can as stabilization. That's the goal. And what I hear from the advisory board too is. Generally speaking, the advisory board is a conservative financial crew, from what I can tell. They're not, they're not spending, you know, they're all, they're all always asking, what about this? What about that? They want to know how much you're packing into stabilization. That comes up every meeting. I hear it constantly. And I think it's smart. Um, it's, it's sound financials. Um, um, spending, financial management. And so I'm gonna be looking at that very hard again in FY twenty-three, because I do think a year from now. We may have a surplus, but it won't be five million like it was last year, and it may not be four million like it is this year.
Well, on that note, if I may, Mr. Chairman, a quick update legislatively for you to talk about and maybe to ponder. Uh, I did attend a function for Representative Galvin, who was the key sponsor. For the bill to increase the deeds excise revenue, which we talked about at that joint meeting. And unfortunately, from his aid, I got a direct uh, polite statement that said basically, it was in a committee for further study, which means it basically. Probably not gonna go forward this session. Um, speaking to him though, in person, and I stressed to him. That this is a serious issue that all the counties are interested in and that we really need to get action on this sooner rather than later. And he encouraged me to pass on the sentiment that we would perhaps refile. He'd be glad to do that. Perhaps look at some different numbers and working with the Senate version, which he sent back to us, which is slightly different. And perhaps again, to maybe even make some kind of a, a personal appearance or a lobbying or so sort to kind of be, move us along next year. So. In terms of like the real estate market, no one knows, you know, interest rates going up. We see, and according to Register O'Donnell, uh, receipts seem to be stable, but maybe declining a little bit. And I think, like you said, looking at what could happen, it's a what-if, but getting this thing approved at the next session, I think should be one of our major goals. Would help us, would soften at least a little bit of that, you know, loss of revenue by making uh, more deeds revenue available for us. So. Just something to think about in moving forward.
Okay.
I did share that with Billy Buckley too.
Um, number seventeen, emergency items are topics that Chad did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. I do not have anything this, uh. This meeting, I just, uh. Want to remind you that uh, we're not gonna adjourn this evening. We're gonna recess until a call of the chair, which I believe is gonna be July thirteenth.
Right. In the event, because you'll be recessed, you are required um, to help us with any bill payments or unexpected transactions before June. July tenth, I will let you know. That is not expected. But that's another reason why the meeting, you'll be remaining. Okay?
If, um. If uh, there's an emergency, um, you have my permission to use my stamp. Same for me. I'll be around though.
Yeah.
And likewise with me.
You got it.
We know, I probably won't be situated to help you with that. So yeah, I would say yes. Can you, when you get a translator, give me the dates on the advisory board meetings?
I'll laugh at service.
Great, great, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, let's take a motion to recess, not to, yeah, to recess. To the call of the chair, which. Be honored before July thirteenth.
Right. So motion to recess our final meeting of the fiscal year to allow year-end business to come forward. And a motion is to recess at two sixteen, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Fair enough.
Excellent. Motion made in the second to go into recess due to the end of the year filings. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is recess.